Everybody all rise for the pledge.
Ira.
He's on.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming out tonight and joining us. And we're going to be joining in a second by Ira. Robin is not here tonight, but I'm sure she will be watching as it gets televised. And first order of business is just to see if we can adopt our agenda for tonight. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? All in favor? Okay. And then are there any comments from the public about matters that are not on the agenda? All right, hearing none. We can go to our consent agenda. So do I have a motion to vote for consent agenda personnel? Item six, consent agenda special services, item seven, and then item eight, consent agenda business. All in favor? And with that consent agenda, just one thing to mention, and then one thing that I need to mention from last time on the last consent agenda. We want to first off thank Armont Baseball. On this consent agenda, we accepted a $17,955 gift, which was a very generous gift, which will help offset cost of our baseball team traveling during spring break down to Florida, which is a great opportunity for them.
That's great.
And we really thank them for that because it makes it obviously much more affordable for the team to partake in that. And then I also wanted to thank the Byram Hills Junior Bobcats for a $1,500 donation. That was on the last consent agenda, and we appreciate their continued support. So with that, we go to the agenda item that you're all here for tonight.
That you're all here for.
Presentation of the 2019-20 budget.
Yes. So welcome to the 2019-20 budget, proposed administrators' budget. And this budget is really focusing on strengthening and refining the programs that we have right now to meet the needs of our 21st century learners. We're sending students from Byram Hills out into the world, whether into college or the workforce. And these children are expected to go out into a world where they can collaborate with others as creative problem solvers and decision makers. And they are also expected to be able to use resources and extend themselves globally. So when we look at this budget, we deliberately consider ways that we are going to support students in that endeavor. But it's also important, and the administration stresses this constantly, that we are creating a learning environment for kids where they feel that they enjoy the learning that they're doing, and they also find value in it. So we believe that this year's budget really does support that. Our principals presented their budgets to us on January 15th. Thank you. And they inspire and encourage all of the other administrators here to work toward that collaborative effort. We want to remain focused on student needs. So welcome to our administrative team, and I want to thank you always for being here, not only to support Byram Hills School District, but to support the students that are here. And I know that's behind everything we're doing in the work. So how have we remained focused on student needs in the development of this budget? Over the past few years, we've really facilitated, we facilitated students using technology, their programming robots, even at the elementary level. Even our youngest learners are engaging in problem-based learning activities. We've reimagined math courses K through 12. We're providing multiple pathways for enrichment and for acceleration. We've added a full deck of engineering and robotics courses at the high school and have embedded those courses at the middle school and elementary levels. At the elementary levels, we now have community meetings at Wampus. We have voice circles for students at Crittendon. We have developed AP Government and Politics. That includes an economics course in there. Everybody's so proud of that as a new course. We are in year two of a global scholars multi-year program. And we have created new electives like Wellness for Life, yearbook production, metal smithing, and jewelry design. So to say the least, we're very proud of this budget that we're presenting tonight. It gives our students opportunities, and we think it gives them a very distinctive Byram Hills education. So now, Mia. No. And it is on. I think I need to sit closer to you, Tim. Oh, there it is. Nope, back. There you go. And now Mia is going to be discussing our budget development process. It's important to know that our finance advisory committee, consisting of Mia Di Pietro, Mike Sanders, and our board president, Scott Levy, have been instrumental in the preparation of this budget and also in helping Kelly Seibert, our new assistant superintendent for business, to become more acclimated with the Byram Hills budget process. So I'm very appreciative to them for their efforts in this, and Mia will take us through our process.
Which luckily I haven't found me because...
Can't see that.
That's really tiny. So we're at March 5th, which is the administration's proposed budgets. Budget hearing two is on March 19th. Budget hearing three will be on March 26th. Budget hearing four, which is the final proposed budget, is on April 9th. And I just want to point out that the public has an opportunity to speak at two and three. Once we finish three, it's the final proposed budget. Budget adoption will be on April 23rd. Budget hearing five is May 7th, and then the wonderful vote on May 21st at Crittendon between 6:30 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Our proposed budget guidelines are to create a fiscally sound and responsible budget that will prepare, that will be prepared using a K through 12 approach while controlling expenditure growth and taking into account a variety of factors from board goals to enrollment projections, staffing needs, compliance with federal and state mandates, and a review of all our debt services, investments, facility needs, and so forth.
So our 2019-20 budget for next year, $94,534,535. That's a 2.37% increase from the prior year. Important to note, that's not a tax levy amount, that's just a budget-to-budget increase on a year-to-year basis.
Yep. And also important to note is that the budget-to-budget increase last year was 1.9%. Last year was lower than the average of the past five years, this year as well. We've been as high as 4.6% in our budget-to-budget increases in the past five years alone. Our focus, you know, has been on, as Mia said, enrollment, on fiscal trends, expenditures, revenue, and our capital improvement plan. But last year, the budget, we were able to really take a close look at that budget and reduce the budget by close to $1 million. That's not something that the district has ever seen in its history. I don't know if we'll ever see it again, but because of our enrollment decline, we were able to make that adjustment at that time and are proud of it. While a reduction like that is not common, we always look to make sure that everything that we're offering is commensurate with enrollment and that faculty is commensurate with enrollment. So that has been a big help to us. So how do we actually stay within this tax levy, and how do we have these budget-to-budget increases while still improving our programs and facilities? That's the big question that every district asks itself. We have been fortunate in our budgeting in the past. The board, two years ago, adopted a capital reserve fund. And last year, we were able to put unencumbered expenses, let's say, into that reserve fund. Now, somebody in the public may be asking, why does the school district have an unencumbered expense? How does that happen? Well, we could have budgeted a certain amount for the teacher's retirement system and budgeted higher than was anticipated. A lot of the time, it's things like fuel costs, which are surprisingly lower for that particular year than what we have budgeted. And that helps in the creation of budgets like this. So while we're putting in a new turf and track this summer, we were able to take that money out of our capital reserve fund, and you are not seeing that in our capital projects, thus probably taking us above the tax levy. It's also worth noting, when we're doing our budget, this concept of bonds. Now, we have a bond that is going to be coming off at the end of this next year, and we have another bond that finishes in 2023, right? Bonds are not always a bad thing. We have many of our neighboring districts right now looking at bonds between $50 and $80 million to cover the cost of repair work in their districts. We have not been in that position. And although we never are looking for a bond, we do have to consider, when our bonds mature, do we need a bond for necessary repairs or replacements, roof replacements, furnaces, anything along those lines? If you consider that bond coming off, putting a new bond in will actually not raise the taxes for people in our community because they will continue to pay that same amount. And it also doesn't reduce our tax levy by doing that as well. So how the budget was developed? We're looking at supporting student needs and enrollment. A lot of the things Mia said, state mandates, contractual obligations are a big part of that. And that is something that's always outside of a district's control during budget season. Our operational costs and utilizing unemployment benefit reserve funds and retirement contributions also in considering our budget. So we continue the vision that I spoke about earlier. But I would like to point out to the public that our programs are on our website under curriculum instruction and academic departments. And you'll get a real sense of the fact that while we have had declining enrollments over the years, we have never stopped with our options for students in recrafting courses that we have and recreating what we think might be a path that's going to get them to their college or career readiness. When we're looking at our budgets, we're always looking at enrollment. The numbers, high school has, Byram Hills has experienced a period of enrollment decline. They're now telling us that by 2023, 24, we should start to see an increase. Remember, those children aren't born yet, so we have to wait on that. District enrollment, we're starting to plateau at this point. For the 2019-20 school year, we're anticipating a declining enrollment of only 26 students over K-12, and 12 students the two years thereafter. So I want to remind everyone also, I gave a presentation to the board earlier in the year when I received the demographers' report about the projects that have been already approved or waiting for approval in the town for additional housing. That will also certainly influence enrollment over time. And if you look by building, welcome, Ira.
Thank you.
If you look by building for 2019 and '20, the numbers are interesting. Coman Hill is going to have an increase of 21 students, Wampus, a decrease of 21 students. So we will start to see these ebbs and flows from building to building. HCC, an increase of 30, and at the high school, a decrease of 56. So that will continue. We've followed the trajectory of these paths before. Focus on staffing and resources is important. We have done much over the past two years to assure our staffing needs, our meeting our enrollment needs. We reduced nine teachers from 2017 until now by not filling retired positions. We've adjusted positions to meet our needs, things that we're doing all the time with the retirement and perhaps changing those positions. And now Kelly is going to talk about what our budget includes and get to the particulars of components and what's included in each one. That job, I'm happy to really...
So the proposed budget maintains all our programs and services currently right now, keeps our state and federal mandated programs, and maintains our athletic and extracurricular programs as well as transportation. So really no changes in terms of the services we have now going forward. Okay, so when presenting a budget, there's three components to present. There's the program, the capital, and the administrative. The largest portion of the budget is your program budget. That's your teachers, your librarians, IT, guidance, nurses, athletics, transportation, pretty the majority of your staff within your school district. That makes up 70% of the budget. You know, salary benefits, supplies, everything of that nature. The second category is the capital component. That's your building operations, your custodial maintenance staff, any debt service payments, and your cap plan.
Transportation's in there?
I'm sorry?
Transportation's and capital?
Transportation's and program. And then finally administrative. That's your audits, your legal services, your central office administration, staff, your principals, APs, directors, and department chairs. That makes up about 12% of the component budget. So you have your binders in front of you tonight. That will give you a little information, line-by-line breakdown of each component and the increases by budget code. Tonight, I was just going to review a couple and highlight a couple categories and just kind of talk through that. If you have any questions about other categories, please stop me, I can answer any questions that you have. So again, the administrative, excuse me, the program budget, the largest, about 70% of your total budget, it's a 3% increase from year-to-year from prior year. The largest one being your teachers and regular students, or regular schools, excuse me, that's your teachers and your teaching aides, their salaries, supplies, equipment. It's a 2.6% increase from the prior year. I want to draw your attention to the social worker services and psychology, psychological services, two categories that's kind of worked together here. As Jen mentioned, we're having a new position as a licensed clinical social worker next year. You see a 100% increase, obviously because of the new position, but you'll see the line below it in psychology, you'll see a decrease of 4.4% with the reduction of the psychologists through resignation. We're able to fill that and reallocate those funds to pay for the social worker. So that's why you'll see a big jump there, new position, and a decrease. That's where the funds are coming from. The last one I wanted to point out was the employee benefits. That's obviously your retirement, your TRS, your ERS, your health, dental, vision, all that fun stuff. You'll see a 2.8% increase. We did see about a 5% increase in health, but we don't have such a large increase in benefits because it kind of got offset by the lower TRS and ERS rates. The retirements both went down this year as opposed to last year, so it wasn't as big of an increase or big of a hit with the health insurance increase.
TRS and ERS, you have the numbers now from the state?
Yes.
And we know anecdotally that next year it'll go up, but don't, obviously, we don't, that's not this year.
Right.
Is the health locked in now, or does the health...
We have the rate for next year.
You do?
Yes. And I'll get more of that later. So any questions on the program? Okay, the capital component, again, about 18% of your total budget. Just a small increase, 0.2%. Your first category, operation of plant, the 7% increase, that's your custodial maintenance staff, their equipment, natural gas, electricity, and security. And that's why there is an increase, security. We had additional, we had SROs and additional security manager for next year, so that's why that increase is taking place. I'll jump you down to debt service.
Kelly, just a quick question. We, our first budget together with you, was anything, and I meant to say this on the program, anything jump out at you? I mean, it looks like when I look at year-to-year, those costs are driven, really, this doesn't look like an unusual budget.
No.
From our standpoint, nothing really jumped out, even in the subcategories. Was this something for your first time that you said, oh, this is Byram Hills, it's a little bit different structure here, or something that, you know, you felt specific about that you wanted to discuss, or...
Yeah, sure. The only thing that is different, and I think is a very good thing, is your cap plan. There's a lot of school districts that don't have that and don't maintain their buildings. They push off their maintenance year after year after year, and then they have a big capital project and have to borrow to get the maintenance done. So that's something, it's excellent for, a lot of schools don't have it, but it shows why you don't have a lot of debt service and you don't have borrowing a lot. You're not going out to bond every five years because you're maintaining within your budget on a year-to-year basis.
The deferred maintenance, as it's called, went out the window here about 15 years ago.
Yeah, it's great.
So we'd be very successful with the capital.
Definitely. So that was really the only difference.
And that type of budgeting, I think, as Jen, you were even mentioning before, we tend to be pretty strategic in nature, which I think doesn't allow these erratic, you know, changes like might see, oh, we're deferring $1 million from one year to the next because of the, we were able to do that based on actual versus budgeted expenses. But the point is, I think, for, you know, our taxpayers, it also smoothes the budgeting process, and we don't have kind of erratic expenses in and around our budget, so.
Right. And the one additional tool that would be nice to have is the TRS reserve, which is again being talked about this year, and hopefully maybe with some movement in Albany, that's something that could be there for us next year. We'll see.
We need that.
Yep. It's a good segue. The debt service, it's the last year of the payment for the 2005 bond, so you saw about a, almost 10% reduction, about half a million dollars in that. That's just the last payment of the bond, and then less interest being paid on that bond.
And that bond was for expansion, and that was during a time period where the district grew 78% in 15 years.
That was our second major bond issue within six years.
Wow. It's a lot to go to view.
And then back to the cap plan. We've increased that by $1,000. The turf project, it was sent out to the state with the high school windows as part of the, part of the project, it was sent together. Now, the reason they did that is because you'll get state aid on that. If you send the turf project by itself, you wouldn't get no state aid. So we teamed it with the windows and able to, we get 10% state aid on that. So, you know, we're going to save $150,000, $160,000 on the turf field because of teaming that with the windows.
Making the windows cost about half.
Yeah. If you take the difference from the turf field and the cost of the windows, it's about half the cost. So it worked out really well. So that's why there's additional increase for the cap plan. The details are in your binder as well, the other projects. Administrative, about 12% of the budget, a 1.9% increase. Just want to draw your attention to the legal, professional, information, BOSI's code, and then the curriculum development categories. You'll see a 9.5% increase in that, in one, the top, and then a negative 4.6% decrease. There was just a staff member that was coded incorrectly, so I reallocated that staff member to the appropriate place in personnel. So that's the reason for the increase and decrease. You'll see a very, very low increase in benefits for the administrative component of less than 1%. Again, the TRS rate did go down significantly, and the majority of the people in this, in this unit are TRS-related, so a slight increase in benefits. And then your major budget drivers in any school budget is your retirement cost. Wasn't much of a factor this year. Your TRS went down, it was at 10.6, it's going down to 8.8, so a significant reduction in TRS. And then ERS is at 14.9, it's going down to 14.6. So good news this year in reductions in the retirement, like Scott spoke about.
Would've been a good time for a reserve.
Yeah, perfect time for a reserve. Yes, you're right, because you just dashed them away. There's potential for an increase in TRS next year, a really good year. It's basically a five-year average with TRS, and a really good year in stocks and bonds is coming off. So there's potential for an increase next year with TRS. But we'll wait and see that. So the pension cost this year wasn't a huge budget driver, but in the future, it is. And then your contractual costs, your salary and benefits, obviously your main drivers in any budget. Your salary based on your contractual agreements, and then your health insurance. We're part of the, it's of Swissship, the statewide school cooperative health insurance plan. I was formerly on the board, Jen's on the board now, representing Byram Hills. Over the last four years, the average increase has been about, been about 4%, and it's been comparable to the NYSHIP plan, which is kind of the other big health insurance plan in the New York State, and that was about 5.5% increase over the last four years. So we're actually doing pretty well with our health insurance. I know that sounds crazy, at 4%, but in the health insurance world, that's, that's pretty And in addition to the major budget drivers, some other concerns, some of the governor's proposals regarding state aid and changes to the STAR, the tax cap, making it a permanent law in New York State without any changes to the current calculation. Obviously, every year, unfunded mandates not being funded or lack thereof. And then any changes to the federal tax law that's taken place, we'll see where that goes and how it affects us.
And I was just at a meeting with the Westchester delegation of legislators, and certainly the tax cap levy law permanency seems like it has, you know, tremendous amount of momentum this year, having passed through the Senate.
Yeah.
And it'll be up to the Assembly now because the governor's, you know, for it, so that's something that could happen this year.
You'd be surprised if it didn't pass.
I would be too. And, yeah, and then I think with our state aid, I don't know, it's too early really to have heard anything else, right? But that's always something that we have to watch out for. Unlikely probably for massive gyrations this year, but I think there's still a lot of talk, certainly in the state, a lot of it coming from New York City and other places around a redistribution, which could have an effect on us in future years, not likely this year, but...
Yeah, and the governor usually comes up with a lot of these things every year, and it kind of disappears when he negotiates with the legislature, so hopefully that happens again this year.
We just don't want to take our roughly $4 million for granted in the state.
Yeah, and if he, there's talk of him reducing the billing from 10% to 5%, so that would really affect us.
Yeah, that has some momentum too, yeah. And then on the redistribution, there's an organization, I forget the name of it, that has like put out new runs and is advocating for a new distribution plan, and it would have us at zero.
So I look forward to the March 26th board meeting. We'll be discussing the revenue side. Tonight, we talked about the budget-to-budget, the expenditure side. We'll talk about revenues March 26th, state aid or lack thereof, our tax levy, used to fund balance and reserves, full value per town, utilization, estimated tax rates, and some true value tax rate for Ira.
Yes.
Ira's favorite.
46 is our number.
Kelly knew it was your favorite when we were planning the budget.
Off to a good start, young man.
But we're the same thought we were last year.
46.
Just wanted to go over the calendar for the next presentation, next presentation budget hearing number two. March 19th, we'll be hearing from the program for students with special needs, computer-assisted instruction, art and music, and curriculum development. Jen have some final thoughts?
Final thoughts, first of all, congratulations on your first presentation, Kelly. Well done. Everyone in the room knows how happy I am you are here. So last year, I ended this with a question. If I were a taxpayer in this town, or I were a parent with children in this school district, what would this budget tell me about where I live or about where my children go to school? I think it's important for our taxpayers to know that last year, we had a different external auditor for the first time, which was very important to me in my first year as a superintendent, who gave us very good feedback about assuring us that there were no findings of concern in any of their evaluative processes. A reminder that we were rated by Moody's as a AAA rating. They confirmed our standing last February. We reflect what they call a very healthy financial position. We received a report from the Office of the Controller stating their review of our fiscal stress determined there were no designations of stress based on our financial reporting of last year either. So if I were a taxpayer, I would want to know that this is a district that has really been managing the finances and the budget. As for people with children in our schools, how do I feel about that? As for our students, we still have 100% of our students last year who attended college. The special recognition document, which comes out of Tim's office, which is one of my favorite pieces of literature, it shows that in 2001, 20% of students were accepted into the top 11% of colleges. For 17, 18, 78% were accepted into Tier 1 and 2, with 60% being accepted into Tier 1 colleges. We've never before seen this in our history. And Mike, thanks for tracking that for us in the guidance department. Our superior college admissions are also met with so much student recognition. At the end of every board meeting, I end with student highlights, and I'm never without a few things to say. We continue to rank in the top 100 high schools by US, in the US by Newsweek and by Forbes Magazine, and Standard and Poor's rates us as a value-added school. So now I have to get to some statistics, some information that I think is important for our students. Our middle school, last year ranked number one in ELA at grade 6 in Westchester, Rockland, and Putnam, third in grade 7, and first in grade 8. That's pretty outstanding. For math, we were fourth for grade 6, third for grade 7, and 11th for grade 8, but I don't really count that because of all of our algebra kids didn't take it, it's not really a real...
Who's our middle school principal?
Yeah, yeah. Nice work at the middle school, Angelo and Kim.
That's right.
And science, in grade 8, we were third in Westchester, Rockland, and Putnam, and we were in the top 5% of districts for our region's exam scores. So I want to thank our administrators who have come tonight to listen to this budget, and to people on television who are viewing it, know that we are always looking in our budget to follow our district initiatives from year to year. We are looking at STEAM opportunities for kids, we are looking for leadership opportunities, authentic learning experiences, and sustainability, and differentiation, and Tim, is there another one? Character education, character education, yeah. And that, that really drives this budget from year to year. So thank you, and we hope you join us, well, not all of you, because you need to be back at 7 o'clock tomorrow morning. But the next time, we will be hearing from fine arts, and special services, and technology, and curriculum.
I think we'd be remiss if we just didn't take a minute, given how successful we appear to be, to really thank the parents. Because without their continued support, and which goes back, I think, really to the formation of the Byram Hills School District, this town has always been front and center, a major supporter of public education. And people come to Byram Hills, it's no secret for the schools. They don't come for the weather. So to the parents who continue to support the district, who continue to... So to the parents who continue to support the district, who continue to become thoughtful voters, and to go to the polls in the budget, to continue to send us students who are ready to learn and eager to learn, we thank you, and we look forward to our continuing collaboration with you.
Well said, and I think two other points. One is we look forward to having some more detailed discussion over the next coming couple of meetings, where we dive into more of the details. And we would definitely be remiss not to thank everyone for coming tonight, because we know that you lead busy lives with lots of things to do, and it's an imposition to come here, but your coming here is clear support for the budget and for the work that you do, and we appreciate it, and it means a lot, and so, you know, thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you very much.
And now, unless you would like to stay, which you're welcome to, please leave. So we get on to item 10.1, school start and end times.
Right. Okay, so this will be brief. Remember our Board of Education goal, or for anybody from the public who does not know, for excellence in teaching and learning. One of our sub-goals under excellence in teaching and learning is student wellness, and really, the board starting to explore conversations about school start times. So if you queued in before, you remember that Phase One was just about research and information, and me sharing some findings from the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Medical Association, and sort of making a connection between that and some of our results of our Stanford Success Challenge. That was the survey that we did through Challenge Success through Stanford University. We realized at that point that I think our children were getting 6.25 hours of sleep on average a night when they should be getting over eight. And Phase Two, for sample start times, we looked at busing implications, and we looked at other school districts. I showed what the level of detail was that many other school districts had taken in this quest to start looking at school start times, to give us a sense of the breadth of what it would entail. And then I took a look at some sample Byron Hills start times. You recall, option one was, and this is a what-if, what if we changed school start times by 15 minutes? Option two, change it by half an hour for middle and high school, making it later. Option three, by 45 minutes. And option four was, what if we just looked at our transportation? Is there a way to make sure that our routes are efficient enough that we don't have kids on buses before 7:00 a.m.? Keeping in mind that some of our earliest bus pickups are at about 6:40 in the morning. So today, very quickly, Phase Three, I started to wonder, well, how would a change in start times affect our extracurricular activities in the school, including athletics, extracurricular activities that our children are involved in in the community, because they're quite extensive? And although community extracurricular activities do not guide school start times, they are very important, because these kids are having active and robust after-school lives, and there are some considerations we should probably have as a school. Our staff, contractual things, and family planning. So we will be looking at that a little bit now. So I started with athletics, and I said, all right, now, we have a school end time of 2:25. Let me just pick the fall, let me just look at the winter, because that's really the time with daylight savings time that it will most affect kids who are playing out on fields. How does this affect our extracurricular for athletics? So usually, if you look at the fall only, they have practice times, and game start times usually at about 4:15 or so, the length of the games, and when the bus departs. But if you look at the game time for field hockey at 4:15, you know, an hour and a half later, they are ending. Kids are not returning home until 6:30 at night. So 4:30 is going to be 6 o'clock for those kids, finishing their games. So these are games that are taking place outside. We already know, if you're a parent and you've been on any of these fields, you're squinting at the end of the game, trying to be able to see the kids at play, and it is difficult. So what happens if we just move it by 15 minutes? I'm not going to take you through all of the options. An argument for lights, Ira says, but, you know, not everywhere has lights. And that makes us a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week lights program. But what if we just moved it by 15? What if we just moved it by 15 minutes? So if you look at these games that might start at 4:30 and end at 6 o'clock, now, this 4:30 event is going to be ending much, I mean, we're getting to the end of daylight. Like, it's going to be very difficult even with 15 minutes, especially if we have buses that might be delayed in traffic getting to these games. 10 minutes is going to make a big difference as to whether or not they can finish. So it does start to impact us even at 15 minutes. And certainly 30 minutes, if you're going to be starting a game at 5 o'clock and not finishing it until, it just can't happen at 6:30. So the most potentially would be 15 minutes, but I even see that as being a bit of an issue. Winter, less of an issue, but you have to remember too, that kids are getting home late. So while I may have a delayed start time by 15 minutes at my school, I'm not necessarily getting home until after 8 o'clock at night.
So with the schools in the, I mean, all over the country that start much later, private schools, many public schools, like in Maryland, the whole, like counties change over, how do they do it? How do they do sports, I wonder? How do they make it work with such a dramatic change?
With the light? Well, I guess it depends where you live. So if you're talking about the Northeast, if you're further south, you're having light for much longer. You know, you're not susceptible to some of the things that we are.
Our travel times might be a little longer too.
Our travel times are long. I mean, we're commuting over the Tappan Zee Bridge too.
Right.
Some schools also have study hall hours period, they don't have.
Or they do what Greenwich did, and make it the, I forget what they call it, but they...
That flex period.
The flex period, they shortened all of their academic periods to create a flex period, so some kids could have enrichment, and some kids could head out to their programs. So it really, it really is problematic. I mean, you have to be very careful about it. And then I started saying, well, you know, we have these activity buses that are taking kids out to all of these events, and how many events are there? And I'm just going to breeze you through this. We have about 14 after-school activities that we take students from Wampus HCC and Comen Hill to. This is the number of pages of activities that these kids are going to. So while that doesn't affect us and school start times, it is something to think about, what's happening to these kids outside of school? And are we just, by creating a 15-minute or a half-an-hour difference, making their nights later, lessening their family time, I'm not really sure what we're doing as far as that is concerned.
The logistical issues on the scheduling seems to have gnarled up the beauty of the concept of the medical benefit.
Yeah. It makes, it's why nobody's doing it quickly, and when people are doing it, they're experiencing difficulty when they're doing it, because there's so many parameters to think about. So when I looked at what I just showed you, which was brief, but I look at my original option one of having the high school and middle school go to school 15 minutes later. We know games will start 15 minutes later, we know we have maybe an issue with daylight savings time, but not as much. Outside extracurriculars might be minimally affected. But when you get to option two, and you're starting to look at a half an hour, I don't see how our athletics can function, and definitely our outside extracurriculars can be affected. Forget about option three, it doesn't work. And option four is really that one option that I'm still very curious about. Remember, we have not had anybody come into transportation and examine our routes in...
Katona did that, right?
Katona did that as a precursor to looking at their school start times. I mean, they needed a logistics expert to come in and figure out our, how they could change their start time and change some routes. But I also wonder just about the efficiency of our routes in general.
Yeah.
Is it, you know, it has not been really looked and looked at, as far as I know, ever.
And I spoke to the folks over at Katona, and the board, and they had very positive experience with the exercise of doing this transportation review. They were trying to solve for, and I forget which is one of their schools that had an early start time, the other one wasn't bad. And originally, they thought it was going to be quite costly, and then after the review, they really uncovered some interesting ways to do it in a much more economical fashion, so.
And it wasn't costly for them to have this group come out and review it.
Right, it was a very inexpensive arrangement.
I think less than $10,000 for sure, yeah. So some of the considerations in these phases that I've come out with, remember in the beginning, I said these are broad brushstrokes, it's just to get us into a frame of thinking about what it would entail. Routing and busing is a big issue, we haven't even talked about traffic. So that would be something that would have to be considered. We spoke about the travel to athletic events and inadequate light, later home arrival times. That's something that's like a complete unknown to us, what happens to these kids when they're coming home now every day a half an hour later than they were before. Bus garage and driver hours, impacts on family and family time, elementary schedules. Remember, we just looked at the middle school and the high school. It may very well be that some organization of changing school start times has an effect on those two schools also, which will really be interesting when we try to negotiate that with teachers and staff in their contracts. So complicated, but nonetheless, we care to look at it.
And essentially, we could do option four, like, either with one of those other options or on its own, I mean.
I think, I think the board could decide to do nothing. The board could say, let's take, you know, let's take a look at a transportation consultant and just have them look at the efficiencies and see what we see, and see if we want the next phase to be after efficiency. I think efficiencies has to happen before anything else.
That's what I'm saying, is we could do option four regardless of where we go with, with any further discussion, right?
Right, because just to, I guess, remind everybody, you know, we're on a process side. First of all, thank you for doing all this work, because you've now given us like three presentations, they've been thoughtful.
Thank you.
And thorough, and it gives us more information to go on rather than just the abstract concept that, look, there are very few things the scientific community totally agrees on, this is one that they do, so it's important work, so thank you.
It does an understanding of how complex the issue is.
Exactly, and how multifaceted it is. So now the question is, do we, do we say, you know what, this is complicated, we don't have any appetite to look for it? Do we say that because we haven't looked at our bus routes for a long time, and so much of the option four or option one is intertwined with bus cost, because it doesn't have a lot of other ripple effects, but bus cost is a major item, do we get this consultant to, or get a consultant to take a look at our routes and then report back to us and see where we are, and then at that point, decide how to move forward? Or do we take the more aggressive step of saying, oh, we really want to do a full-fried fledged review of this in a much more meaningful way? And, I mean, I could share my views, but I don't want to, if anybody wants to speak first, they're more than welcome to.
I mean, I, I think the transportation part of our budget is super significant. We have our own buses, we don't outsource that. Not looking at the bus routes, it should almost be a normal course over a certain period of time, and I think it would be incumbent upon us to do that. And the technology around all that logistics, the Uber concept of, you know, mapping this stuff better today, I think it would really, I think it's necessary to take a look at it.
Taking into account how many kids are being driven, and, you know, we're factoring them in, but they're not even taking the buses, and...
They wouldn't get driven if you didn't have a 6:40 pickup.
Maybe, right, maybe, maybe not, but having, having somebody who knows what they're doing go through that process if it hasn't been done in ever 15 years.
Given how complex bus schedules really are, and given the fact that it hasn't been looked at in so much time in that kind of a lens, it seems like even regardless of the school start time issue, it's a good thing to do. But given that we're thinking about this issue, why not have somebody come in with kind of two lenses? One is just look at our routes in normal course and see if there are efficiencies, and then with the theory that we know that some kids are getting picked up so incredibly early, I mean, 6:45 is early.
When's the last time we did the review of bus routes and transportation? Wasn't that long ago?
No, we had somebody who came to look at the efficiency of something, but it wasn't all of our bus routes, and it was not...
It was a partial review?
Yes. It didn't yield any information from us.
So we didn't pay them, right?
And we're also somewhat unique in that.
Likely he was paid for his services. Do we know if this was done, sorry, well in Katona, do we know if they were happy?
They were very happy, yeah.
So is it prudent maybe to...
They thought it was very informative.
They saved a lot more money than they paid.
Yeah, so it might be something worthwhile to look at that company.
We're also somewhat unique in that, although we're a small district, we're very spread out. So our bus routes are, are different from, you know, a district that might be a little more...
Our square miles that bus covers is extensive.
It's true.
Yeah. And we have so many of these little, little streets and cul-de-sacs that the buses can't turn around in, and you have to factor...
Well, you have Bedford, I mean, you know, we, when I lived over there, you got picked up before 7:00, and it's, it's...
It's a very long bus route.
It's dark in the morning, it's, yeah, so it's something I think we should really look at. I'd be all for that.
So, and I don't think we need to vote on it, it's just to give you direction in terms of the next steps, it sounds like. Are you, Ira, feel good about doing that analysis, and then we get reported back?
I think it's information.
Yeah, exactly.
Kelly's already looked at a couple of different companies.
Oh, good.
Great.
Do we have the information on who Katona used?
Yes, we do.
Great.
Okay. That's great, really comfortable.
Thank you so much, Jen, that was very thorough and helpful.
Starting working, I can imagine. I can imagine such a...
Attorneys tabu you don't get until 9:30.
But they bill you for hours before that anyway.
Do they work on Wednesday?
Keep on, keep going.
All right, item 22. Policies.
Okay, let's get serious, we have policies to review, so.
Tim, I always want you to pick up that wad of paper for public study. That's just for today.
That's only part of it. Scott, do you have to do anything first? I think you have to...
Oh, should I make a motion to review policy? Third read, sexual harassment, one, sorry, 01100, 110R, 0110E, and then a second read on 1400 and 5030, student complaints, 0100, non-discrimination, equal opportunity, and 6600, fiscal accounting report.
So moved.
Second.
And just clarify, it's the first read for the 0100 and for 6600.
Great. So let me start with the third read. We've looked at this policy for a long time through the policy committee. We've been giving it a thorough look. It was a complete rewrite of a sexual harassment policy. As we've explained before, there's three components to it. The policy, a regulation, which outlines all the details and procedures, and then the, what's the third card? The exhibit, which is the form that we fill out. And those are all required policies. We, at the second read, Scott pointed out one piece to the regulation, which is on page four, and if you look at the track changes, you'll see what we did was, I had asked the question in the particular line and questioned the second sentence that Scott brought up to us at the second read. We asked, we ran it by legal counsel, we brought his advice back to the policy committee, and the policy committee recommended the change that's noted under track changes, which is essentially striking this one sentence and changing one of the words. And I thought that was a good catch, Scott, so the policy committee felt good about that. And there were no changes to the other two pieces from the second read. The ones on the second read, policy 1400, which is public complaints, you looked at before, this policy was over 10 years old. We needed to update it to include provisions for complaints that fall under Title I, and we just made a few other edits to it as well. And then policy 5030, that policy is student complaints, and again, that policy was over 10 years old, and we made some updates to it. The update, sort of the main issue is this, was making it easy for students to be able to go to and see all the different policies and where things that impact them, so they can reference them easily, was the main thing in that policy. And then we have the first read policies, which are 100. This policy is the non-discrimination and equal opportunity. We brought this up because of a recommendation from NISBA, which is to allow for accessibility on the website for this, and we made a few other updates to wording as well. And then we have policy 6600, which came before the policy committee. You, I believe at a board retreat, revised the duties of the audit committee, so we made those changes. We also had regulations as well as the policy, the regulation wasn't required, and it was repetitive, so we merged the regulation into the policy, so that's why you see the added language. That was language taken directly from the regulation. There might have been a similar smithing on it as well.
Ira?
Tim, 5030, student complaints, how do we notify, or how do students become aware of this particular policy?
Yeah, I think there's processes in our code of conduct, if I'm correct. Yeah, we reference the code of conduct, and the code of conduct is reviewed with students at the beginning of the year.
Does the code of conduct dovetail back into this policy?
Yes, it's, well, it's referenced in this policy, and then...
No, I know, but is the code of conduct referenced the policy?
I'd have to check that, I'm going to, I don't know off the top of my head, but I could look into that.
It should. It was, it given them half the story.
Yep, yep. You can check that.
I think it's good.
And that's it.
Anybody have any other questions? Questions or comments or suggestions? Okay, otherwise, so we can vote, unless anybody thinks otherwise, on the third read policy, zero one one zero zero one one R, zero one one zero E, and then also vote to accept the second read of fourteen hundred and fifty thirty. And then at the same time, we can vote to make, as I said, so we would accept those policies, and then as a second read on zero one hundred, non-discrimination equal opportunity, and then sixty six hundred fiscal accounting reporting.
Right, vote on all of that.
Right.
All in favor? All right, question carries. Thank you.
Okay.
Policy committee's work.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hansa Superintendent, report.
Okay, so first, if I can open this correctly, I just received something, a very special invitation to Citizen of the Year Golf Outing and/or Dinner. Yay! Two thousand nineteen Citizens of the Year Golf Outing and Dinner from the Armon Chamber of Commerce honoring our board member of twenty years, Iris Schulman, and our Byram Hills Education Foundation, Tuesday, May fourteenth.
You are all.
Cordially invited.
Totally cordially invited.
Even if I have no handicap?
Well, we'll have a special set of clubs.
I think I'm just gonna come for dinner. I don't think it's appropriate for the superintendent to golf during the day.
Depends what your handicap is.
Especially since I'm terrible.
But my fellow board members, I would love to see you there. If you can clear the evening, it would be wonderful.
Yeah.
Or the day.
That's really great. How timely. Just came in.
Congratulations on a well-deserved award.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
What is the date?
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth.
You'll all be getting emails if you haven't gotten them.
Yeah, we got it already.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's perfect. So congratulations and well deserved, Ira.
Thank you very much.
For my report, I want to talk a little bit about a meeting I had last week with superintendents and George Latimer, our county executive, and George Latimer is proposing what he is calling the Westchester County Property Taxpayers Protection Act. This act would allow for freezing property taxes for the next two years and allocate new revenues to assist with budgets and tax relief efforts that he is planning on gaining from a one percent sales tax increase. He estimates that when they say they're going to take ten percent of that estimated hundred and forty million dollars and turn that back to schools, they have, gave us an estimation calculator, and this could mean an additional close to three hundred thousand dollars for Byram Hills. So we will, I will report out as that is in movement, and we'll see how that works.
George has always been a good friend to public schools.
Yeah, and, you know, his, he was compelling in his argument that the county has been operating on reserves for operational expenses, and they don't have it anymore. And, you know, while this may be a two-year fix to try to help solve a bigger issue, they really will struggle with operating costs if they don't do something. I am also meeting this Friday with Mary Ellen Alea, the Commissioner of Education, with other superintendents and Regent Johnson, and we are going to hear what they think about some of our advocacy items that we're bringing to their attention. And they'll talk a little bit about the vision for the state, so I'll report back to you about that. And then we have student and staff highlights this time. We'll start with staff. Anne Marie Pasqual at the middle school was published in Curriculum Matters in an article that she collaborated with, with Dr. Colten Ecker, and an article called "The Homework Experiment." It is fantastic. It talks about her whole process, Tim, I'm probably not doing it as much justice as you can, but it talks about the whole process of changing her thinking about homework and the research that she did and the people that she connected with, and the metrics that she was using to try to see, is it really, why are kids doing this homework? What benefit does it have? And what effect would it have if, you know, we gave them optional homework to do if they felt that they needed it? And it was interesting, one of the biggest parts for me was how much classroom time she regained from not, as a middle school teacher, walking around checking homework, right? That, you know.
Five to ten minutes a day.
Five to ten minutes a day.
Five to fifteen minutes a week instructional time.
Right. And that instructional time doesn't mean her being in the front of the class, it means her being with individual kids and seeing their ability levels and what they're struggling with. So it's a great article, and it just came out, so I think you'll probably include it in your next packet.
It's in a new curriculum, it's called Curriculum Matters, it's from my curriculum leadership group at Northern BOCs. We're trying to experiment with writing articles and sharing strategies on different topics. So I'm gonna purchase copies for you all and make sure you have a hard copy of it.
And congratulations to Anne Marie, that was brave.
Congratulations.
That's great.
And it stemmed from a lot of the work that she did with Joe Bowler when she was here from Stanford and.
Yeah, from the math work that we've been doing in our partnership with NYU, with Ann Bergender, and the work we're doing with the math program. So it's a lot of things coming together at once, and it was one, it's called "The Homework Experiment," because she literally thought it would be a four-week experiment, that she would just try and it would just not yield any results, and she would stop. But it turned out to, and this was three years ago, she started it, and it's been a journey to reflect on her homework practices.
Is her, are her findings being shared with the other rest of the teachers?
Yes. So I did share it with the entire faculty, and then Jen and I plan to also make it a focus for our work next year.
I love it.
Both homework and grading.
A superintendent's day focuses.
She's the first male teacher who ever didn't use a red pen, she just circled, didn't put a grade, she said, "Go back and look at stuff." It was so empowering for children to be able to correct their homework. It was the first time I ever experienced that was with.
Gets kids talking about their mistakes instead of looking at the embarrassed, putting it in their backpack and never looking at it again.
And as a teacher, the six and a half tons of the English papers that are graded over the years that nobody looked at, right?
Yeah, they just look very great.
It's not.
And what's amazing is that so much has changed since we were kids in terms of how we teach and how much we've learned about how different people learn differently, and yet homework is the same.
Right.
You know, it's, you go home and you do stuff by rote, and, you know, that hasn't changed, it's done. But you.
I'm excited to read the article. Thank you.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Other than memorizing the fifty states and, you know, there are certain things you need to be able to pull out of a hat. Three times three, there are certain things. All right, for our student highlights, we had a Con Ed winner, Maggie Walsh, basketball player from Byram Hills High School. Yay, Maggie.
Well done.
Congratulations to Maggie and to Coach Tara Orion. Maggie was interviewed by WHUD, and her photo and Journal News article appeared in the paper, so congratulations.
It's great. Nice surprise to see that.
I love that they're posting these things on Facebook, by the way.
I know.
Because, you know, calls it out to people who don't have kids in the high school.
I know, and I love the responses. It's great. Which brings me to Veronica Zwojek. Her work was accepted into the K-12 National Clay Show, and it's going to be exhibited in Minneapolis, and that is two leading ceramic artists. This is the second year she was recognized. She's a junior, I thought.
She has a sister in the middle.
And so her stuff will be going to Minneapolis. For science research, Katherine Lev was one of ten national finalists, I love this, for the two thousand nineteen STEManities Research Competition, Integration of STEM and Humanities. She investigated motivation for people to exercise, and she will be invited out to California to share her research study.
That's an important topic.
I know. Right? And then our two thousand eighteen National Merit Finalists, the seniors who were named, Alan Chang, Elise Kaner, David McDaniel, Nicole Tiso, great kid, one point five million juniors, remember took this PSAT, fifteen thousand were finalists. This year, we had sixteen commended students, seven finalists, semifinalists, four finalists. Since nineteen ninety-five, we've had a hundred and forty-one semifinalists and a hundred and twenty-five finalists.
That's right.
That's amazing.
Congratulations to you.
Yes. And to all of our kids. Yeah, they are amazing.
Very nice.
And that is all I have.
Excellent report. Jen, can I ask you to relinquish control of that so I?
Oh, yeah. No, you need to look at that.
Why, you taking that off the screen?
No offense.
Put that back.
Put it back up at the moment.
It's gonna get burned into the screen.
I don't know if I'm going.
You know how that happens?
Just put it over there against the whiteboard.
Your face will be burned into the screen.
Burned, all right.
Okay, let me get this up, I'm just gonna do a brief presentation to update you on the new school counseling regulations. We've talked about it previously, I've written to you about the change, so I just, as we're moving forward and the changes need to be implemented next year, wanted to give you an update of where we are.
Perfect example of the unfunded mandate.
A perfect example of that, and you will see that in a moment.
But good for kids.
Very good for kids, but the state's not helping us out. So they did start doing this work back in two thousand thirteen, and they were very public about it, we knew the state was looking into this, and there were a lot of stakeholders that were, worked and consulted along the way. It was in two thousand seventeen when the Board of Regents approved the SED recommendations for the changes, so we have known about them for a year. I've been working with Dr. McGrath at the, in our guidance department to look at them and review and do a plan for us, and he's been meeting with Jen and I regularly to review with us some recommended changes, and I'll go over that with you in a moment. I mean, first, simply review what these changes are. There's four major areas of changes. The first is that the guidance program used to just be six through twelve, now it's going to be K-12 school counseling. And in that, it does say in the new regulations that all students have to have access to a certified school counselor. So that means students K-5 have to have access to a counselor, and the certified school counselors need to be involved in the designing of the K-5 program. That's one piece. The second piece is that we now have to be tracking both the career plans and academic plans for students starting in sixth grade, and I'll tell you how we're going to do that.
Tim, sorry to interrupt, but don't they already have access, the K through five have access to a, they?
To a counselor.
To a.
Psychologist.
The psychologist does not count as a counselor.
This is a school counselor, not a psychologist.
Natural guidance counselor for a middle school.
Good question and good clarification.
Are we developing career plans in sixth grade, or is it?
You will know where you want to go to college and what you want to major by the time you're in fifth grade.
We do develop the plan, and it will be implemented, Scott. Start talking to Andrew now.
The questionnaires you fill out that tell you you're gonna be a far stranger?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, things like that. Now, we do have to be starting to talk about career plan. Know the plans, but start tracking those plans. And we have to, we do have to have a system to track those plans so that they can be passed along from year to year, so we don't lose all that information. I'll talk about how we're gonna do that. The third piece is that we have to develop a comprehensive plan. We do have a six-twelve plan, so we'll be making it a K-12 plan, and Mike is updating that, and that plan needs to be updated annually, and there needs to be an advisory council. And that advisory council has to meet at least two times per year, and be made up of stakeholders.
Who?
I'll tell you what our recommendation is, so.
Ira.
So a good way we're implementing.
I'm talking about the, I mean, the titles of the state, parents, administrators.
No, it just says representative stakeholders. It's for examples in the regulations, but it doesn't dictate who the stakeholders are in the regulations. That's left out of the local districts. Yep, sorry. Yep. So our implementation plan, what we're working on now, the module we will use, we will use something in Naviance, they have a module that we can purchase so that we can track these career plans for students. We're currently training our guidance counselors now on how to use that module. We are also now reviewing, I've been meeting with Peggy and Mary Beth to talk about the needs at the middle school level and what would be uses for school counselors, and I will be meeting with them, also with Mike and with Ken Lapples, because we'll be talking about the middle school counselors working with them. And that's gonna be our plan, is to use the middle school counselors instead of hiring. We don't need to hire a counselor in the elementary schools now. We're fortunate that we, because of the decreased enrollment, we can now use our staff and find a way that they can sometimes go over to the elementary school in a way that still allows them to meet their needs at the middle school and work with the elementary schools. If you imagine, there's large districts really panicking over this that are finding how are they gonna fund to get school counselors in all of their elementary schools, so that is the piece where it is gonna cost money.
Is there training for K through twelve, the current guidance counselors, or are they trained for middle and high school?
There's certified, it's a K-12 certification. It's K-12 certification. And we will be training, we're gonna be integrating them in, so this spring, we're gonna start bringing them into the elementary, and we're gonna see this as a multi-year process to get them used to it, because some of the counselors don't know, they haven't worked in elementary buildings. So we're gonna help them in that transition.
And unlike our high school where they're all mixed by alphabetical, in the middle school, they're assigned grades. Would the middle school counselors be assigned certain grades so that they kind of?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
But, but they'll have familiarity with those counselors before they get to middle school, which is really nice. This is a person who's always coming to my elementary.
Yeah, we're gonna figure out that plan, we're gonna see what the needs are. It could be that one counselor will go to a couple of grades and work with that grade every year, and maybe that they'll rotate with them, or it might be they'll just go in and do school-wide things. We're figuring that out now, and it may change and evolve based on need. One thing I, an advantage I see is that these young kids are gonna know these counselors when they get to the middle school, will be familiar faces. That's where I see an opportunity. So we always try to look at what are the positive opportunities in these types of situations.
When you have a concept.
I think our young kids getting to know that's gonna be really helpful. So I like that aspect. This summer, we will be having the counselors at the middle school working with elementary teachers and the principals to develop the program and curriculum, and it might not be finished. This might be a multi-year process to figure out exactly what that's going to be, and Mike is working with me on developing that K-12 plan for school counseling. And in the fall, we will convene the advisory council, and right now, we're recommending this group for the composition of the council, to include the guidance chairperson, board member, administrator from the high school, counselor, psychologist, faculty, parents, and students, so that it's made up of a wide range of folks that would have input into the counseling program. And there has to be annual reports to the board, so we'll start those reports in the fall.
If we do that, yeah. They're not gonna convene until the fall, so we'll.
It would be an extra committee list.
Yeah, if we do it.
If we do it, right. And if that's something, you know, we could decide if that makes sense. This was just a recommendation from Mike that we thought seemed to be appropriate, but it can be revised.
Interesting. Like, is it more like site-based, which, you know what I'm saying?
Right. It could be like that, so is it a formal committee? Right. It could be like that. So, is it a formal committee? Because site-based, you don't have in your, we'll have to talk about whether, how that makes sense.
So, there's some useful nuggets here. I mean, to your point, them getting to know the younger kids.
Yeah.
Setting educational goals is not a bad thing. It's actually a really good thing. Think about if you wanna improve your public speaking skills, well, maybe you should take that high school course, or maybe you should do an extracurricular that taps into that skill set. So, that's useful. I guess the thing that we want to balance as carefully as possible is that, obviously, we have to follow regulations, number one, and there is some benefit to this. But the need for middle school and high school Guidance Council is so important.
It is.
Getting into college is much more complex than when we're kids. And then, navigating through the morass of decision-making around course load and balancing sanity with, you know, trying to do as much as you can do throughout middle school and especially high school is so critical, that we just think we need our resources to be really focused on it, because it's such an important task. So, it's balancing that.
And we're being very careful with that. I've been meeting with Mike and Kim on a regular basis to talk through some of the logistics and really thinking, how many hours is this going to be? We're really down to that nitty-gritty. And once we really started to think about it, especially in the first couple of years, we, it feels manageable. Kim felt relieved. The counselors feel relieved. So, we are starting to map it out a little bit.
Oh, that makes sense.
But we have to know, they have to meet their needs at the...
And this will be something, if you can report back, just to see how it's going and make sure that we still have, you know, the ample resources we need at that high school level, where it's so pivotal.
Well, mandated to report back to you once a year.
Here you go.
So, I will have to, but we'll do it more often than that.
It sounds like it's pretty vague still, though, right? Like, they're saying that they have to, the K through five have to have access to a counselor. It doesn't tell you how much time they have to be in the building, right? They're vague about that.
Right.
It was, I believe, purposely vague from the state, so I do thank the state for that and not tying our hands with that. That was something we debated a lot on my listservs and in my curriculum leaders groups, is what does that really mean? And I'm like, don't ask. It means access. Interpret it how you want it to be.
It could be once a month.
Stop asking questions.
People kept asking. I'm like, I'm figuring it out. I know what it means. So...
Yeah.
That seems to be a big part of the newness, you know, the extension to younger children and that. And, I mean, I could see that as being constructive to the extent that students become more comfortable having resources. Maybe sometimes when kids get to middle school and high school, they're still reluctant to interface and ask for advice sometimes around that. So, I think facilitating that at a younger age, at least that piece of engagement, is a good idea. But what it really means at that age is hard done.
Well, I think about Peggy and Dave doing the community meetings at Wampus. That's probably exactly what the hope is with something like this, that somebody can be going in and talking to kids and having a relationship with them and developing a little sense of community and socialization and all of the different things that happen at each grade level. And that's kind of where I naturally saw this Guidance Counselor going for that particular school. I don't know what Peggy will want to do, but...
That'll be one of our first visits this spring. I already talked to Kim and Peggy about bringing the counselors over to see the community meetings as an example, and started talking with Mary Beth about doing some of the, having the counselors observe in the first year how Kelso is introduced, K-two. And then, maybe eventually, the counselors are teaching some of those lessons in the classroom about Kelso, along with the classroom teacher. You know, that's just one example of where we could be doing it. And we're also planning a social-emotional learning curriculum and where to bring in some of those pieces. That could be opportunities for the counselors to work on as well. But again, we have to also realize we can't be demanding too much of their time out at the middle school. It's a balance, and we're gonna find that balance. That's all I have.
Thank you.
So, we'll keep you posted.
Interesting stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
All right. Any questions? Are you good with the budget?
Yeah.
Well said.
Anything? Yep, all right. So, onto board reports of just, I think, two things to, one thing to mention, and then one thing to clear. Went to a meeting, the West Pub meeting that they have every year with all the Westchester delegation of legislators, and we do it this time of year because it's right before the budget season in Albany, or right in the midst of budget season in Albany. And the delegation was there. Dave Buckall was there. Shai Mayer was there. Andrea Stewart-Cousins was there, among others. And, you know, look, I think we have a delegation that definitely cares deeply about public education, and they're all over a lot of these issues. Regional costs got a lot of discussion, as Westchester's looked at differently and below where Long Island is and regional cost index. So, that's something that's, that has everybody's attention. TRS Reserve was another. This building aid issue is another big one. And there are a litany of other issues that were discussed. So, we'll see. We'll see what comes out of the next few months, and we'll continue to have dialogue and contact with them. But it's important to know that, you know, we care about these issues, including our, the aid that we do get, to make sure that we, you know, maintain that, that stream of aid. So, that was the synopsis of that. And then, secondly, I would just make a proposal for the next board meeting, which is just to add to new business, just an item of just a board discussion regarding naming and naming policy, even though it's something we revisited recently, just to revisit that in a discussion. Do you also have any?
Well, Jen kind of stole my thunder with the Con Ed award to Maggie Walsh, which...
We can pretend we, I know.
No, no, it's, no, it's well-earned by her.
Yes.
I would just say to the coach and to Maggie, and boys and girls, each of the basketball teams won their league this year. And as everybody knows, Section One Class A is the most competitive in the state. There's little doubt about it. The girls, I think, won one playoff game, went against the Buzzo, and Somers played well, but Somers is a team to be reckoned with. But their future looks really bright for the girls. And the boys, they were playing well, and then, unfortunately, Ms. Cunningham decided to come watch the game with me. And that was the end for the boys. That was it, right down, right down the chute. But it was, it was a great season for the boys. Congratulations to the players and Coach Weaver. I mean, when you get to the sectionals, sometimes there's just no explanation. You know, one day it's your day, and one day it's not. But congratulations to the boys as well on a great season. And believe it or not, spring sports is right here.
Starting.
Right here. And it's amazing, even though we have a...
We have boards of kids outside of our offices today running in the parking lot.
Yeah. But the, and the hockey team had a terrific year also. We shouldn't forget them. They had a terrific year. Playoffs did well. So, another, you know, just rolling on, successful athletics with Byron Hills. We have our student athletes. We do the school proud.
On the hockey team, just the accent thing, which was in the spectrum, the pink, the rink fundraising. It's just great to see that type of community effort.
Yeah. It's become a tradition now, that pink, the rink.
Two quick reports from the Athletic Advisory Meeting, which is great to the extent that that group now consists of students, faculty, coaches, and parents. And it's nice to get feedback from the kids and the players at that meeting, because they feel like they're being heard, and it's quite interesting. The two main discussion points was this continued effort to merge teams, where we have athletic programs, like the wrestling, where we merged it in another school, or the ski team with Briar Cliff. It allows us to have a program, share some of the costs, and it seems to make good sense in these, you know, single athlete programs. There was a fair amount of discussion on whether the students felt good about it or not. And I think the general consensus was the ability to field the team and to be able to be out there. So, that continues to work well. And that seems to be a movement that's happening with many districts.
Oh, I think that's right.
And Rob felt supportive of it. It seems like it's working quite well.
Football teams are gonna, every year, you're gonna want more of that.
Well, that was a big debate in and around. There was coach concern around merging team-type sports versus, you know, individual participation.
It's difficult.
It's gonna happen.
And the second thing that kind of came, came out of the meeting and the discussion point was the level of how serious the middle school program should be or not. And there's a fair amount of, you know, chatter about cuts at, you know, lower teams and trying to increase participation in a modified program, which is, as long as I've been around, we've been talking about this. And I think you have coaches that want it to be more competitive, yet middle school students are playing on town teams or travel teams. And, you know, it's making those modified teams not, not be as competitive. So, there was a fair amount of dialogue around that. And I know it's something that Rob's looking at and getting input from the coaches. So, that was it.
Great. That's helpful. Anybody else? All right. Communications to the board. I haven't had time to report. Minutes. They got a motion to approve the minutes from February fifth.
It's a move.
Any comments, edits, changes? Thank you, Donna. All in favor? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Second.
All in favor? Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.